Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Southfield on Monday, August 27, 2012 at 7:00 PM. The Attorney General is calling.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
There.
Mr. Fercanti.
Here.
Mr. Seiner.
Here.
Ms. Fordyce.
And Mr. Lee.
Ms. Seymour.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. May I please stand and join in the presence of all?
Our Constitution, our Constitution, our Constitution, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening. We have an appointment, Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Madam Chair. Make a reappointment to the Commission on Superior Duty and then reappoint Adalina McCallum to that commission. The President, have you come up and agreed your draft? They're here. We will make motion to approve this.
Order.
Motion by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion has carried. Next, we have the minutes.
Madam Chair. It's prior to your minutes, if I may have a few minutes, I would like to acknowledge the death of a lady who was giving a lot to the city. She came to the Civil Defense, it was called back then, 1987, as an emergency management auxiliary person, and she was the first woman to reach the level of nature. And I'd like to affect the whole of the 1987 Civil Defense, that's what it was called back then, and I'd like to read a paragraph wherein it was a news of new members to the Civil Defense. "Say hello to Florence Lapinley, a member of the Southfield Civil Defense Auxiliary, and a lady volunteer who deeply involved in everything relating to the betterment and well-being of her favorite city. The Pines is a member of the Civil Defense Public Relations Staff and is joined there by daughter Tammy, 20, as her assistant. Both are ambassadors of goodwill. Privately, Florence is public relations person for the Moscow School of Drafting in Mount Lemons. Her husband George has been with Chrysler Corporation for some nearly six years as a harassment engineer. And George also teaches part-time at Moscow. Florence is president of the Kramer North subdivision and president of the Southfield Historical Society. Plus, she is a member of the Commission for the Preservation of our City, as well as a past president of Southfield's Business and Professional Women. She rolls up her sleeves and is in the thick of the Goodfellows' speech media drive as well. The Pines family tree consists of five children and seven grandchildren. She says, 'My volunteer work for the city brings me much pleasure and many inner rewards.' I gather a moment of silence if you could, bow our heads." Thank you.
I move the approval of the minutes for committee to hold day seven, regular meeting June 25th, and committee to hold for July 16th.
Motion by Mr. Seiner, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the minutes of May 7th, June 25th, and July 16th, all in favor.
Aye.
Always motion has carried. And this is the content of agenda. I'm going to read just the details of this for those in audience and especially for those who are watching at home. Item CAA, item request for approval of the City Southfield participation in the state Michigan Fire Restoring Program. This would provide a portion of insurance from the city being held in escrow by the city in order to secure the care, replacement, or removal of structures damaged by fires. Participation in this program provides yet another tool to protect the health, safety, and community insurance standards in the city. This program was reviewed at the August 13, 2012 study session. Under state law, this program goes into effect through state statute passage of resolution this evening. Item CAV is authorization to renew the communication equipment maintenance agreement with Motorola Inc. of Chover, Illinois. Motorola is the manufacturer of our dispatch center communication network and related radio equipment. The recommended agreement is for the two-year period, October 1, 2012, through September 3, 2014, in the total two-year amount of $170,813. This represents an annualized increase of 1.5 percent over the 2010 contract price for its highly specialized facilities with response time guarantees. Funds are provided in the 2012-2013 fleet operations communications budget and will be requested in future budgets as council may approve. Item C is approval of the bid award for office supply and other business-related projects with Staples Inc. to be provided from the Southfield Distribution Center for the two-year term, August 28, 2012, through August 27, 2014, at an estimated annual cost of $44,000. This represents a 4.3 percent reduction over the previous annual amount of $46,000. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-2013 approved office supply account and will be requested in future budgets as council may approve. Item E is a board bid to HT, H2O Utility Services of Bourbon, Michigan, in the not-to-exceed amount of $81,725 for installation of new replacement commercial units for approximately 715 commercial accounts. The recommended company has successfully completed similar projects for other Michigan municipalities. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2012-2013 water and sewer budget. Item E is approval of a federal display reflected by Lawrence Technological University in conjunction with University's 80th anniversary and the anniversary of Southern Providence on September 27, 2012. Item S is approval of self-released assistance recommended board and director's appointments, which require the joint approval of the city and self-reputed schools from the Oakland County Circuit Court. The purpose of self-released assistance aimed at private Michigan and private corporations is to strengthen families by reducing attendance at the liquidity and neglect through positive community involvement.
Madam President.
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Order.
Motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, to approve consent agenda items under item CAA, all in favor.
Aye.
Always motion has carried.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. May I add?
I have one question. This has to do with consent agenda, I intend to do it to Southfield U-250. Or what sort of relationship do we have, I think directly to the chair to the attorney, in terms of their reporting back to us, or us exactly knowing the council, knowing what they're, what happened within the operation?
Well, through the chair, as you're aware, this used to be the old PYG Commission, and it developed and actually was transformed into this private nonprofit corporation. It follows the models now of various other cities where the Oakland County Circuit Court provides the funding for the social worker who runs the program in that area. But the way this was structured, because there is city involvement in terms of, we do, we still do a lot of the campership programs through block grant program funding, the schools provide space for them, so it's a joint effort. The Articles of Corporation don't specifically say that they have a reporting obligation, but I think that certainly as kind of one of the partners of the three entities, I'm sure that if we convey to the organization that he would like some type of indication of the activities that they've been involved in, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to cooperate, because they like the strength of the three partners working together. So I'm sure that, you know, they have a social worker who is funded by the county, that person could probably come on some kind of regular basis and report as what their activities are.
And if I should ever mention, they could have, even if it's an annual for the council, or either we would give permission from the county for it to be in the act of the program, because I think we have to say, connect to this.
I think a reason I did just to hear from you is that we all consider that involved with the other suggestions, well done. Can I, Mr. Seiner?
Yeah, I would just like to make a suggestion that we approve fireworks for LTU, and that when we have off time, non-holiday fireworks, we tend to get a lot of calls, and that there should be communication with the police department so that they can reassure residents that the fire isn't falling.
And with that clear, if I can, would see an operation of the resident, I want to say, in that, in that, in that company?
Of course, yes, I'm sure. Always talking.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think that those members should be named, because there's a group that used to be, or had the guidance, and they have now moved to become the youth assistance board, but I simply, I think they should be, residents should be aware of who they are.
Would you like to?
Linda Hayes, Timothy Merkis, Vicki Salinger, Holly Corbar, Holly Graves, Chimera Taylor, Betty Moore, Donna Posey, and Nicole Rice.
I think that's, um, I think that's.
When I say, I say Linda. What?
Ames, that's Ames.
Ames, I'm sorry. Yep.
I do have a question. We just approved this, and actually, we should have been asked on these questions. But does this mean that they're all serving the same three-year term?
Through the chair, that's correct. They're, they are not staggered. Every, every three years, they appoint, the board of directors appointing proposed new board of directors, and then they're subject to all three of those entities approving that board.
So it's conceivable that they have complete turnover, and nobody would know what's going on?
Conceivable, but it would respect to this particular year, this is now the second three-year period, there were only three additions. I think five or six of the original continue to serve on the board, there were only three additions. So there has been at least now, historically, some base of people that have stuck with this group, so.
Okay. I might add, this has been working very well, cooperative between the schools. Schools provide the space for meetings and other support functions the city provides for a part-time administrative person, the secretary-on, and it is working well. With regard to, through the chair and council, Mr. Fraser's question, if that were to be the case of total turnover, we would, we would go in setting that direction. And as part of Ms. Jordan's concerns as well, we will monitor the makeup of the board and the performance. We do, and so I will contact the person from the court, the social worker, and find out what would be the best method of reporting. I think coming to the COW would probably be better than another report for you to read and digest, so that would be my suggestion.
That's a good idea. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, just a point of information. What is the, what are the qualifications of these board members? What are their duties on this floor?
It's voluntary, and basically, these folks have spent a lot of time previously, when it was the city commission, and that's where most of them got started in their interest. Ms. Ames, Mr. Merkis, Ms. Salinger, Holly Graves is Parks and Recreation employee, and those are ones that I know for certain had considerable experience working when this was a city commission.
Do they raise funds for this school?
Some, but mainly the funding is through the, to the city, through block grant and Parks and Recreation programs.
All the funding goes through block grant?
Yes.
But, you want to wait until the public? Next, we have the public hearing.
Madam President, Madam Mayor, I'm the board. At the July 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting, staff presented a request from CBS Radio. At this time, I'd like to do a quick powerpoint presentation, and it's your pleasure, open it up to the two public hearings. Please. relocation of their radio stations to the City of Southfield.
Hello, my name is Greg Ross. I'm the主管 of control of CBS Radio, and also the controller of one of our six properties in Detroit. We have currently one radio station, Maxx, from wanting to get located in Mount Lemons, that's the first station that we plan to move to Southfield. The expected move mandate for that station is October 1st of this year. We have a, okay, oh, thank you, okay. And as you can see, now the stations there, Ticket, number four station, WWJ, American Station, 97.1, contemporary hit station, 104.3, that's Detroit Greatest Hits. Some people used to call those stations oldest, oldest, 99.8, Baddest Country, and then Talk Radio 1270 is conservative talk. We have that as this program, all of these locations, all of these stations will be located at 26455 American Drive.
So currently, CBS Radio is located next door to 26455 American Drive. They are looking to move into the vacated Panasonic space, and will be taking over 40,980 square feet. They're looking to make a $2.8 million investment in personal property in the City of Southfield over the next five years. The city is requesting, or our department is requesting that we offer them a five-year tax abatement, which would impact our budget by $73,870 over that timeframe. CBS Radio currently pays approximately $21,500 in taxes, and they'll continue to pay a similar amount over the time until they move into their new location. So as you can see, we will still be collecting real taxes from CBS Radio as a property owner. And again, once the, after the six years, that full taxes will be coming back onto our tax roll. The impact of CBS Radio coming into the City of Southfield is great. We'll be retaining their headquarters in the community. In addition to the 150 more people that are employed at CBS Radio in Southfield, they'll be relocating 163 employees into that vacant building. Again, the owner is making a $3 million investment, and CBS Radio is very active and works with many of our Southfield businesses on a regular basis. So we see this as a big win-win. Again, strengthening our partnership and our local business community. It's helping for us to compete against our neighboring businesses. There was a chance that CBS Radio could relocate all of their facilities at one of their other locations. We'll be bringing in 164 jobs into the community. Will help continue to keep our business community diversified by having more radio stations and that type of business in our community, and again, we'll still be collecting the real properties. And we know that as CBS Radio continues to evolve, they, they hope to grow stronger in the market, and they have pledged to work with our career center to fill any vacant positions. One of the other big areas that was in contention at the July 16th meeting, the property owners did have an appeal on their taxes. That appeal has been dropped, so, you know, we're hoping that that issue has been removed from the table. So I'd like to turn the floodlights back on so that the people in the viewing audience are not heated by the presentation, and.
We'll hold the public hearing until, all right, this is the public hearing, and I declare a public hearing open. Anyone wish to come and, to come forward, here's the name and address for the record, and that's fine.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I thought Mr. Ross was very nice at the COW meeting. I think all of his information is great. I was under the impression to establish a light industrial district that had to do something with manufacturing, obsolete, desolate property, and it just appears to me, no disrespect to Mr. Ross or CBS, because I listen to WWJ 950, I know quite a few of the people that work there, and see them hosting community events, so I have no problem with the company. I only have a problem with, it appears as if we're using the PA 198 establishing a district, and it leads to a PA 328 as a marketing tool to get businesses here. When you call into the City of Southfield, it tells you a lot of things that this city is known for, and I'm just wondering at what point in our local government are we going to start marketing those features, like how much business space we have, and that Southfield is 26 square miles, and we're the oldest home to, we're the home of the oldest regional mall in the United States. CBS is a billion-dollar company, and I really don't believe that if they don't get this tax abatement, it's going to make or break the company. I think if we're going to continue to do this as a way of occupying some of these vacant buildings, we should just get into the furniture business. And instead of giving a tax abatement, why don't we just start leasing the property, and then, I mean, leasing the personal property, the desk, the computer servers, the telephones, the petitions, the chairs, and then maybe we could make some money that way. Instead of giving an abatement, we could be the person renting the furniture to them. I just, I mean, no disrespect to Mr. Ross or CBS, I just think that we are going a bit overboard with these tax abatements. We have lost our tax base pretty much already, and we really just cannot afford this right now. Thank you.
My name is Geraldina Montoya. I'd like to speak in general about these policies that have continued for so long, and that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to interrupt you, I need your address.
I need your address for the record. You have it in, when I signed up, I put it.
Well, I, we always give the name and address. You can give it to the clerk if you wish.
Yes, it's already in the record. I already gave it when I signed up to this general hall conference. I'm staying with someone else, I don't know if they want their address published.
Go ahead.
Um, in general, over time, for example, Southfield was announced to be a farming community at one time. I have been here since the beginning of June, I don't see any farms left in the city. And even though in the short term, such enterprises as being proposed will give some jobs, these jobs are contingent on a private commercial jurisdiction that our country has been put under, and we are losing control of those necessities of life that will sustain us, if there is such a thing, and there will be, I believe, economic collapse, political and social collapse, I believe are imminent in this country. We are being deceived because under this private commercial jurisdiction, all the avenues of information are controlled by the same people who now control our economy. We're not under the principles of the republic. When we pledge allegiance to the flag, it's not true that that flag stands for the republic. It stands for the central commercial government in Washington, DC, which is owned, if we track it, by the owners of the three banks of cartels that are headquartered in Washington, DC, the Federal Reserve, the IMS, and the World Bank. Unless we break the hold that those people have on this country, we will not ensure that freedom sustains here. The control of our information, our curriculums in our schools, the press and the media.
Listen, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're to speak to the issue of.
Well, the issue is that we're going to create jobs by having a corporation set in place with certain tax abatements, which is the policies of the municipal corporations over time, because of who controls them. But the people at the local level do not control the policies of these institutions. We must break the hold of the commercial private jurisdiction that has this nation in stranglehold. We are being set up, not only the people who work for CBS Radio or the corporations, all these corporations, including the public corporations, are owned by the same people, namely, those who own those three banks of cartels. So unless we are willing to take the lead ourselves and set a course here to get the ship of state off this treacherous course, we will inherit disaster. We have no way of sustaining ourselves here, if even our economy collapses, because we have forfeited control of our food supply, our fuel supply, our transportation mode. We're dependent totally on those who control the wealth of this nation by intrigue, fraud, treason. There must be enough people that are willing to have the courage to step forward. You have a plaque outside that says, "In valor, there is hope." There's not enough brave people today to speak out and to do something other than what the master is dictating. There must be if we are to survive as a free people. We must talk the truth, and we must turn off the lies and begin talking to each other directly, instead of mouthing what we're told all the time. We are not speaking for ourselves. And I just pray to God that the people under the council, the Holy Spirit, will take some leadership in this country, because it is the only spirit of truth in this earth, the Holy Spirit is the one true living God. But there's a multitude of liars deceiving us. So the corporate enterprises will engage in such activities that are. So, the corporate enterprises will engage in such activities that are sanctioned by the rules that come down from the federal central government, but it will not sustain us as we need to be sustained because we have a group of people who control this nation to plan to do us in, and they're setting us up step by step, or we're letting them do it without any resistance. Any questions?
Thank you. This is the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come forward. Would you combine remarks to your subject as a particular question?
Fred Bunker, 24201, Garner Street. I've been living in somewhat of an elation in the past few weeks since Mr. Farcasi on television had announced that there were no more tax abatements in Southfield. Did you ever make that statement, Mr. Farcasi, that the tax abatement policy overburdened with Caucasian approval that come to its last days? We can't continue with one racial group benefiting from this policy year after year. And with no disrespect, CBS is quite wealthy. And if there was no claim that a tax abatement policy doesn't exist, I'd like to read from the guidelines of that tax abatement policy that you agree exists in writing in the city of Southfield, Mr. Farcasi, for the official record through the chair. The tax abatement policy in its existence with guidelines, permanent two tax abatement approval?
Mr. Bunker?
Yes.
Yes, there is a policy, a tax abatement.
Great, then we agree. I'm disappointed again that it continues. Could you answer my clock? Could we stop my clock if he's going to speak?
Well, you asked me. You said I said.
I asked you yes or no. I didn't ask you to elaborate. The guidelines, Mr. Moss, maybe you've never seen a copy of a tax abatement policy. Have you? For the official record through the chair? Yes, no? Have you ever seen a copy of the tax abatement?
Getting into a dialogue, and we can talk about that when it's a council.
About a tax abatement?
Mr. Bunker, Mr. Bunker, this is not a dialogue. This is your...
Okay, I'm talking about a tax abatement policy that's under consideration. I have the guidelines to be considered prior.
I am telling you that you're not going to have a dialogue. This is not a council for you to have dialogue. No, they cannot answer you. Say what you want to say. They're not going to answer you. That is not the way we conduct this.
Criteria?
You've got to yes-answer. Either do it as I suggest, or you're going to have to sit down.
No, now I'm completely acknowledging. I understand the situation.
You can comment. You can comment. You cannot have a dialogue with council. They're not going to...
I'm done with that. Could you start my clock over?
No, you can pick up. I'll give you the extra time. Go ahead.
Criteria used in reviewing applications, guidelines for tax abatement, subheading six under the 1974 PA 198, compliance with the Southfield zoning ordinance and master plan. There must be no outstanding taxes owed by the applicant. Submission of site plans and elevations. The project is a redevelopment or rehabilitation project or a new development that is vital to the future of the city. Final, additional permanent jobs will be created as a result of the project. The project, there is a demonstrated need for financial assistance. Is this gentleman, Ms. Freeman? May I ask, Ms. Freeman?
No, absolutely not, Mr. Bunker.
There's a demonstrated need for financial assistance be established with CBS Radio. Yes or no?
Yes.
So, you've shown a need for financial aid?
Yes, yes. Mr. Bunker?
I missed that yet. The applicant has an affirmative action program. Has that been attested to?
This is not a dialogue, Mr. Bunker.
Sorry, can I ask questions? The new investment will promote community health, safety, and welfare. To determine the number of years for which a project may be eligible, the city council will utilize the tax exemption charge, which is a matrix of new jobs created and dollar value of new investment. Is the spokesman for the city, the representative of the tax abatement recipient here tonight, determine that on a yearly basis, the actual number of jobs created will be taken into account by the assessor's office as included in the tax abatement policy directions?
Is there another question and answer period? It's an opportunity.
I'm saying things out loud for people at home to wonder about.
Go ahead.
Because this city approves tax abatements for decades with one race in mind, a very narrow race considering the population of Southfield in 1974 might have been a majority of the type of, the same racial background as applicants and/or the publicly traded CBS, if it is a publicly traded corporation, shouldn't be asking us to sacrifice our personal tax revenue to pay their bills. This happened next door to me with Max Patrol. This city agreed that this city would pay the white non-resident-owned Max Patrol company to install a fence and pay all expenses while Mr. Crowe acknowledged that nothing illegal was taking place while dozens of trees were cut down. We'll address that in a little while. I don't approve of tax abatements. If these people want the prestige of the Southfield address, let them pay their bare share of taxes like the rest of us. I'm ashamed that a company like CBS would appear here after having watched the, some of the comings and goings of that corporation. And they're here entirely to make money off the residents. They don't need this financial assistance. That's the definition of a tax abatement. It's a tax application for financial...
Your time is up. I've given you extra time. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Never anything personal. It's a process in the city. I disagree with...
If there's anyone else who wishes to address the count on this specific, specific issue, please step forward. Otherwise, I declare a public hearing closed. Council?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, public hearing aid. To establish, no, the establishment of an industrial development district is what's on the table right now.
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Jordan.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we approved the recommended recommendation to establish the district for...
Score.
I motion, I'm joined by Mr. Fraser, that we establish an industrial development district under public headwind for CBS.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Yes, before we hold, Mr. Lance. Go ahead.
First, I'd like to congratulate Fred Bunker for the research he did. I didn't know some of that, almost of that. Thank you. Okay. As you know, I oppose tax abatements too. And I am surprised that CBS, who was probably a trillion-dollar corporation coming to our Southfield, they must have 10 times the money we have. And we're struggling now with the home closures and many other problems. No tax, not enough taxes are coming in to support our police, our fire, our services. And we get no help from the corporations. Most of the help goes to Detroit, not us. We're nothing. So, we cannot afford to give away, to allow people to come in and not pay their taxes. It's for three years, five years. To you, it's, to me, it's peanuts that you want. But those peanuts sustain us, help sustain us. I'll never understand why you, all the big corporations come towards the tax abatements. They can afford to give us money, to give us tax abatement from you. Now, you have six stations here. They're all making money, aren't they? Otherwise, you wouldn't be in business. We're not making money. Everything we get is paid out just to exist. We're down 250 people. I think we're down X amount of five feet. We just can't afford not to take in any taxes. You come along and you want the taxes. I have a question. Does the property owner get any tax abatement too when they're moving into? They're not buying the property. They're renting it.
That's correct.
Does the tax, does the developer get a tax break too?
Actually, the real property taxes are passed on to CBS Radio. So, CBS Radio will be actually paying the real property taxes as a condition of their lease. But in the property owner's head, is not getting a tax abatement.
Who is he not to pay taxes?
Exactly. So, they, he...
Do the homeowners, homeowners pay taxes? Yes.
Yes, yes.
He's a property owner. Why shouldn't he pay taxes?
He is paying the taxes.
All right. Why should he have to do it also? I had a thought. They're making so much money. Why don't they give the city dividends in the period of time that they're not paying the taxes? Give us a dividend for the money you make during that period. Good idea. Take it back to your board and see if the board will grant us a dividend. The city, not the individual. Anyway, just a second.
I didn't say that.
She's impatient.
No, I didn't. You said anything? What did you want to say?
You talk about jobs. Of course, they'll hire some people, one, two. They don't hire 100 people. Every corporation that came in here said they hired 400 people, 300 people, 1,000 people. And the end result is that they hired two, three, or four. That's a lot. And we have no way of oversight. We don't have any oversight over these people have tax abatements. I've been out a long time, and I see what's happening in the economy and everything. Nothing's happening to them. They, they have trillions of dollars in cash in there, in there. I don't know where they keep it, but someplace overseas, maybe. And of course, I'm not going to vote for, you know, I don't vote for the tax abatements. They should be ashamed to come to us and ask of us for the money. How much, how much are they getting?
From the city Southfield, 3,000 now.
In three years?
Over five years.
Five years? That's a lot of money. All right, I think I'll stop. But I'll vote no. And you should go back and tell your board that one council, one councilman is asking them not to take, not to come for a tax abatement, but to give us a dividend. Why? Coming to Southfield, we deserve it. We give you fire protection, peace protection, everything. We protect you. Pay us for that. In those five years, they ask, I know you're going to pay taxes. How much more can I say? Will I move anybody here? No. You're going to get it. Yes? Well, I'll finish now. Shall I? Thank you.
My direct recommendations for the establishment of an industrial development district, motion by Mr. Jordan, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor?
Yeah. I have... I wanted to say to you also...
Yeah, go ahead. All right. Go ahead.
To Ms. Freeman, what is the state involvement in this?
There is no state involvement in this project.
Okay. And when Mr. Ross was left for us, I was not going to support this tax abatement because of the property tax appeal of the owner of the property. And I'm pleased to learn yesterday that the owner of the property has dropped this tax appeal. And basically, what we're talking about here is about $74,000 in new taxes that the city is waiving for a return of $477,105. I would be foolish to vote no on this. This is, I don't know why every time we have a tax abatement, we go through the same thing when you believe that the John Park, although they're audited, it's about reinvesting in empty buildings in Southfield, and you waive a little bit of taxes on new investments to get a big return after the three to five-year period's up. And yet, we continually have people who get up and say the same thing over and over again about tax abatements. And the math, I don't agree with their math. The 10-year projection that was on the PowerPoint as well, which is in our packet, I think explains this very clearly. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Farcasi?
Yes, so that we tie up some loose ends, Madam Chair. Some time ago, there was a policy on a tax abatement. It was quite some time ago. This is not an ordinance. This is a policy. And policies can be reviewed and taken one at a time depending on the issue before us. The, probably as the employees, there's an audit to ensure that the individuals do hire that many people. We do the audit, and it's not so they do not get the abatement. Panasonic was in that building at one time, and they were, they went to Huntington Hills with the abatement. So, this is being played out in all cities, and we have to compete. We're the ones that have 30 million square feet of office space. That is our base, base that we get our revenue from. Anything that reduces those 30 millions per p to vacancies contribute through appeals to be reduced in value. So, to keep them filled is an advantage to the city and to our residents that live here and get their services from us. So, I just wanted to explain that. And the final thing I want to say is that I have never said that I was against tax abatement. I take each case, each case by its own merits. If there's no merit, I will not be approving it.
Thank you, Mr. Farcasi. Is there anything?
I think one important factor to remember is that we're competing against neighboring cities for business. And the fact that we just have this tool available to us to offer a tax abatement that will keep them here. And in five years, the taxes that we've made will begin to come back if on the greater scale we can get them. I clearly understand and respect Councilman Lance's position. I, we can't argue with him. This is what he believes. But I think each of us have to look at, in fact, I look at each one of these individuals. But I do believe in this case, that's for the city of Southfield. And I'm glad that they're consolidating and yielding the other radio stations here. And it's going to be ideal and good for the city for the long term.
Ms. President? When we were first approached by CBS, CBS has not made a substantial investment in some time. And they're making, when they met with their New York office, they made a decision to make this consolidation. And Greg, do you want to talk about that? This tax abatement was integral to their decision.
Can we wait until we've had the comments? When the council will have... Mr. Lance, you're not, anyone else?
Yep.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just want to briefly chime in on this, specifically talk to Mr. Bunker. And the reason I say, you know, it's not a dialogue, I think it's the perfect opportunity for you to take the opportunity to address the council and express your thoughts. And I, you know, there's merit to it, and there's merit to what Mr. Lance said. And I'll be honest, the information that you gave to the council, and I didn't want to say at the time to kind of interrupt the flow of your... And I'll be honest, the information that you gave to the council, and I didn't want to say it at the time to kind of interrupt the flow of your me, of your message. It wasn't new to me like it was to Mr. Land. But the way that I kind of do my, my research and come to a, a conclusion of how I'm going to vote is I, I talked, I talked to Ms. Freeman. I talked to our administrator on everything that kind of, in, in this packet in particular, to the things that come before us. And one thing that really exists, a particular case, is that there is a, a hub in Ferndale, if I'm not mistaken, and a hub in Farmington Hills that's going to be consolidated into, into Southfield. Is that correct? Okay. Now, that, that's meaningful to me in particular because that is consolidating branches of this corporation, putting them within the city of Southfield to bring jobs to our city. And as everybody knows, you know, we have this struggle where we have this daytime population in Southfield and we have this nighttime population in Southfield. And I've said it before, the struggle for us as a city is going to be merging those two together because there's a vast disparity. A lot of people work here and we have a blessed amount of people who, who actually live here. And if the opportunity is to bring someone into Southfield on a day-to-day basis to shop here, to eat here, maybe stay after work and grab dinner, I think that's important to bringing people into knowing what Southfield is. And as they continue to transition in life, perhaps one-on-one, they may be a homeowner in Southfield. That's something that's important to me, especially if someone in my generation where you have a lot of people in Southfield that do not live in Southfield. And as we try and grow our population base, this is a, introduce people to the city of Southfield. And we're bringing workers from this region to the city of Southfield. So that's why I see it as a vital economic key for us as a city. And, and as mentioned before, we, we, we're used to be a city that's proud for what we're known for, I think, as well, as mentioned. We should be continuing to be proud that we are the communication hub of this region. We have Channel Seven, ABC, Channel Two, Fox. I think we have Mind TV and we have CBS, the television station. I'd love to continue to add to that and bring CBS Radio here into the city of Southfield. So that's why I'm supportive of this. The other option is a vacant office space that, that it just sits dormant. So to breathe a little life into this city, I'm supporting this project moving forward.
Yeah, we know. Okay, I want to say something. We have been, presumably still are, the business center of Southeast Michigan. We have more businesses here than probably close to ten cities larger than ourselves in the three-state area. I want to see businesses continue to be here. And when you have a company like CBS consolidate and take a prominent place, it attracts other businesses. Businesses want to come where successful businesses are. And other companies will be attracted to come here when they see the likes of Lear Corporation, C, C, uh, Eaton Corporation. That attracts people to want to come here. These important companies are here. Other companies say, maybe we should take a look at Southfield. And in order for us to continue to maintain that prominence that we have as the business center of Southeast Michigan, we can't turn away people in, that want to take a building that's vacant in a prominent location in a city. I'm totally in support of this. I think it's so short sighted. You know, when these things come this far to counsel, if it was wrong, it wouldn't reach this point. We have key staff, well-trained professional staff that look at these things. It goes through many, many sessions to reach this point. It's very short sighted to think that this is something bad. We're in a competitive market. We have this going on everywhere. They've chosen to come here. I'm delighted that CBS wants to consolidate, Mr. Ross, and I want Mr. Ross, I want you to know that. It might be a connotation anyway. But I'm, I'm delighted. And as, as Mr. Ross said, we have ABC, we have Fox, we have, uh, we have several major stations here, major media, TV and radio stations here. We should be proud of this. And to ask for this little bit of help, it's something everyone's able to offer. It's a minor thing to bring more employees here. I'm happy and proud to say that I support this. And I make no apology for it. I'm proud to see you. I'm delighted to want to come in. I'm delighted this Panasonic building will be, um, built. I'm sorry that Panasonic went and lose Panasonic. And I agree with Mr. Simon. When we have this appeal removed from the owner of the property, that's something we don't do. We don't let them do both. And thank goodness they did remove their appeal. So that made it open the doors for this to happen. With that, Mr. Land, do you want to say something? I mean, we called our votes.
I must say something now. This city is fifty years old, right? We're fifty years. Tell me, if anybody knows me, and, uh, when these tax abatements started in the city of Southfield?
Nineteen seventy-four.
Okay. Before nineteen seventy-four, we gave no tax abatements. Corporations came here. They wanted to come here. All of a sudden, the new corporations, maybe they got smart or somebody told them, the city of Southfield will give you money to move here. Okay? And if they didn't say that, you'd move here anyway. So you're taking our money since nineteen seventy-four. And from the year two thousand four to two ten, we gave away, the people of this city gave away twenty-four million dollars. I don't have the figures after twenty-ten. But up to then, it's twenty-four million dollars we gave away in taxes. That's why we had to ask for a millage. We have the struggle and everything. Why? Well, I can understand why the corporations do that. Every single dollar counts. I worked for corporations. I had a few of them. I needed every dollar too, although I didn't need it. I took it. I'm one of you. No more. It changed. Okay, anyway. I'm all in one. Good luck to you. And, uh, I'll still be here for a while and I'll see you maybe better at the city. I'd like to know, anyone can answer, how do the people directly benefit? Don't tell me they'll go to restaurants or, or nightclubs or something like that. How can they benefit to save their homes? Not have their cars repossessed or the suffering that's, that's going on in jobs? In this career they mentioned, it's only recently they started to tell the corporations to, to get the help here. Come on, if you check the records of our career employment, you'll see very few jobs being given out. Because the corporations don't come to us to hire people from here, from here. Anyway, it's not worth talking anymore. I say no.
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah. I've heard a lot of people saying a lot of different things. And the very pragmatic thing about this most of the year right now is the building is empty because another city gave a tax abatement to the current, to the past resident of that building business to move away from Southfield, which opened the door for CBS to come back here and fill it up and bring money back in. So we lost money because of the, the past lease, lessee moved away. And now we're trying to fill it back up and bring money back in. So if we didn't, if we didn't work a deal to entice CBS to come to Southfield, we would have lost the money with no way to recoup any of the money that we lost. So that's why I'm supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. This is the establishment and industrial development district. I want to, I want to say one thing. Mr. Land and others have said, how do the citizens benefit from this? The commercial, the business district of our business and of our city pays sixty percent of the property taxes that it, of the taxes that it takes to run the city. Sixty percent. That's how the residents benefit. They pay less than they would pay if this was an entirely residential community and we had to provide the same services. So it is a benefit to the residents. Anyway, we have a motion on the table. I think it was spoken by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Fraser, to establish an industrial development district for CBS, CBS, um... Pardon me?
CBS Radio.
CBS Radio. Oh, thank you. Uh, I know it wasn't TV, but that's all right. I thought that was in the presenting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Uh, next? Yes, I don't need it. But it's carried. It's to one.
At this time, we would like to request to open a public hearing to, for the personal property, place the personal property in the district that was just established.
All right.
For a five-year term.
Right, for a five-year term. All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to address the personal property exemption, which has already been addressed?
Panel of Gerald P. O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. Couple of things came up. The owner of the property had a tax appeal. I'm sure this tax appeal had been an ongoing situation for maybe a year or so. All of a sudden, they dropped the appeal. Was there some kind of backdoor deal? Was there some kind of consideration? What would make a property owner be caught up in an appeal and then all of a sudden drop? Because they're going to get into tenant. That's just one point. Sixty percent of the Southfield tax base is businesses. When you needed a millage, why didn't just the businesses have to pay for the millage? Why did you go to the residents? It seems like you say residents are so insignificant when you glorify the fact that businesses are sixty percent of the tax base. But you marketed the millage to the residents. So the residents are, in my opinion, more important than the businesses. Because this was, as Gerald Deane said, a farm town. And businesses wanted to come here and they came for a reason. We're the center of it all. I want to know if CBS is going to put a cafeteria in their building? Because if they have a cafeteria in the building, let's just say hypothetically, they hire a hundred and sixty-four people, they'll be eating inside of the building, not utilizing and giving the businesses to the restaurants in the area. And we've had some restaurants either closed, we've had restaurants lay off employees, and we've had restaurants cut back on hours. So all of these abated employees that came with these companies, they're not eating out a whole lot. That's just something that I wanted to say. Now, we talk about, oh, this is not a whole lot of money. We couldn't even afford to have the fireworks. The fireworks was eighty-eight thousand dollars. Thirty-one thousand actually for the fireworks and the rest was public safety. What a shame. Businesses go where they can get the best deal for the square footage when they're going to pay rent. I'm just wondering, does New York, Scottsdale, Arizona, West Palm Beach and Malibu give tax abatements? Just suppose. And did the city work out some kind of deal where, given this tax abatement, we'll be getting some free advertising with CBS? I know they're making a lot of money. All you got to do is look at how much they charge for political ads. The price quadruples. Businesses like to move because they like to show a national trend. And what they're doing, their tax abatements poppin'. You come here, you get it for five years, they don't give it to you for another five years, then you go to the next municipality. And they'll keep doing that and doing that and they'll never pay personal property taxes. Consider that.
Anyone else wishing to address this vision? Please step forward.
Regarding the discussion on this issue, we've made mention about the big media outfits that make their home here in Southfield. The mass communications media, it used to be called, informational and communications media. Today, every corporation, including all the media outfits, are owned by the same people. So they're manipulations, distractions, corruption, diversions media. They do not inform us. We do not communicate with each other through that, those mediums. We have lost connection with one another. We don't own anything today in the continental United States. It is owned by the same people who own everything we have. We are in possession of some things and we could choose to use those resources in possession to set a different course than other what the master has set for us. But we choose to continue to do the will of and bidding of our master in order to maintain our jobs. That can only go so far because when push comes to shove, the masterminds and the overlords with no respecter of persons will take whatever they want from us and we will find that what we thought we had never belonged to us. Many people are finding that out already. People say the housing markets are a downturn. No homeowner owns their home. They're only allowed to have the illusion of ownership. Mortgages rent. Before property taxes on your residence, people did not pay taxes on their domicile. Because we have moved into this private commercial jurisdiction, we pay taxes on everything. We get a license to do everything. Free people, free agents make contracts with one another without the state giving us a license to do so. There's nothing we can do today together with each other without getting a sanction from the central government and its representatives at the lower level. We are not in control. The people sitting in this room are not in control of the government represented by this municipal corporation. And a lot of the people of this nation have the will to reclaim control over the resources of this nation, including the political authority and the capability to communicate with one another through the mediums that are available rather than everything being co-opted and censored. We don't have out-and-out, we just say censorship in this nation, but we definitely have a filtering of information. We still get some information, but it's very carefully put a spin on it that's establishment approved. The conclusions that we need to draw are never publicized to us. That's why we don't even know how to talk to one another without mouthing what we heard somewhere else by the masters to their control of every medium of information, including our school curriculums. We've gotten our college degrees and so forth. And much of it is an organized system of lies that we get a degree in. And we're not questioning what is happening in this nation today. I hope that there are enough people left in this nation that are willing to take a stand and to realize that we're being used. We're being manipulated. We have our junk and our stuff and we want to maintain it, but we don't have each other. We don't know how to connect with one another. We don't know how to do anything with each other except the master directs us how to do it. It's time for people to assert their liberty. Liberty is not something that's given by dictators and we're moving towards a totalitarian regime in this country. The wealth has already been seized and the minds of the next generation are being manipulated through all the new electronic gadgets that have been introduced that weren't available in my, in my time when I grew up. It's very difficult for a person coming up today to have any thought for their own because of who is in control. Now, if these people are enabling, it might be okay to slide along with this program, but they are not enabling. They have proven to be malableant and they plan to do us in if we continue to let them and we continue to go along with their projects and their programs. And this all represents that. This is part of, I mean, these nice people that are with CBS, they're mercenary employees just like all of us in this room. Whatever we're doing, we're under their control, the people that control the wealth of this nation. We're not even on a lawful money system. We, we talk about money. This is fiat money. It has no value and it loses its purchasing power with inflation and deflation, as we well know. Homeowners, we see what's happening with us, with the market. Some people think it's going to get better. It's not going to go back to what it was, just like the price of gasoline. It's not going to go back to a dollar, ten cents a gallon. It'll go up. It'll come back a little. Oh, gasoline's going down. But it's not going to go all the way back down. The same with the housing market. We're never going to see that housing market that existed in the nineteen-
Mr. Martin, your time is up. Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting up with me.
Public hearing opportunity is for you to comment on the vast, the item- The public hearing opportunity is for you to comment on the vast items at hand, and people are making speeches. Mr. Bunker. Got a deer's plug, he doesn't wanna hear this.
Come, keep it.
Mr. Bunker, please address the issue. This is an opportunity to address the issues.
In lieu of Mr. Seiber's comments, and we hear the same thing over and over, I'd like to bring some new information. According to the council, as regards Mr. Lance's statement on twenty-four million, Mr. Lance Lear got two tax abatements in oh-three, oh-four.
Uh, wait, 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 wait. I've got to put you on the clock, I'm gonna start now. You've already given it to me.
They were awarded thirty-five million dollars in two tax abatements. Two years later, like the company that bought residential property next door to me, this council voted to allow Lear to buy residential property, a precedent Jack Barris set in two thousand and five, when Lear bought a hundred acres, they turned around a year later and got a thirteen million dollar ground field tax grant. That's forty-eight million, Mr. Lance, for Lear alone, the champion, six-time tax abatement award-winning, that Mr. Sharet in his depth investigation and tracking of tax abatements since January of two thousand and ten, just after Mick Vanda resigned, just before the mayor was re-elected, Lear announced bankruptcy, providing us all in the United States of America with a four-hundred-million-dollar debt. That's what a tax abatement can turn into, Mr. Seiber, something you've never heard before. But since you were a supporting role in approving tax breaks, like Mr. Moss as a junior councilman, what can be said to you?
Nothing.
Ignorance is bliss. For the permanent record, justice and liberty are hand in hand. The justice in this city would be made more right if these tax abatements were turned into tax endowments. This company could donate fifty percent of their taxes to our library, to our schools, and file for a federal tax credit. Solution! You don't have to give my tax dollars, you don't have to cut me short, you don't have to illegally cut trees down next door to me on residential property that wasn't voted to be approved for purchase by Maxitrol, your latest white-only, non-resident-owned company. The tax abatement list is filled with white people being approved for tax abatements. Mr. Sharet can verify that, he's been two and a half years before he's publishing this tracking of tax abatements. I'm hoping we can expect that report that City Administrator acknowledged he would create after the proverbial horse was out of the barn. He didn't track tax abatements before they went bankrupt. Otherwise, we would've known when they were a hundred million, a two-hundred million, we would've known that. Are you gonna turn over a yearly expense report to see if they demonstrated a need for financial assistance? That's the cornerstone of a tax abatement request, is that the applicant showed an unequivocal need, a demonstrated need in the eyes of the assessor. Somebody who's not even part of any of this is supposed to determine if and/or whether this company has shown a demonstrated need to receive a tax abatement. Another word for financial aid. Isn't that correct, City Attorney? The tax abatement policy, uh, application for financial aid, yes or no?
This is not-
I'm sorry, I can't get a straight answer from the legal department in the City of
Is there anyone else that wishes to comment on this issue? Here and now, I declare the public hearing closed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328, 4th, 13th, 14th.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Frazier. All in favors? Do you mind if I was standing up? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Lance, uh, he's running no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city.
Yes, Mr. Ross, thank you very much for sitting here.
Be a good neighbor.
Yeah, very good neighbor.
One of Frazier's lawyers.
What about the property they abandoned to move into this property? Hmm. I haven't thought about that.
We have no side plans this evening. Next, we come to the communication portion of the agenda, and the first, uh, person requesting, first person on our list is Mr. Wes Bunker. Who needs to address for the record?
Wes Bunker, two-four-two-zero-one Garner. I'm disappointed Mr. Crow isn't here tonight. He had some comments at the previous meeting I attended claiming that this Maxitrol, the white, non-resident tax abatement beneficiary of the two thousand and ten, courtesy of Ms. Freeman, claimed that they are gonna develop property on the east side of Telegraph. She never mentioned the fact that they were interested in buying property on the west side of Telegraph, and never, as I told, that as a tax abatement recipient, they could buy residential property, as you've all taken part in the vote with Lear. Why did you vote to let Lear buy residential property and not vote? Ms. Ward, have you talked to Jack Barris? Why did he have the council vote before Lear bought residential property? And they got a ground field tax grant six, three years before they declared a four-hundred-million-dollar Then we had a loss of a lot of employees. Mr. Vanda, after being employed since July, Mr. Frekasi, is that correct, of nineteen-eighty? Was it Vanda hired? I can't answer that. I'm sorry, I forgot. I'm not in a, this is a family community. Don't talk to the members of your family, I remember the law. The city requires residents or their contractors to obtain a permit prior to removing any trees with a trunk eight in, eight inches in diameter, listen to this, at breast height. This is what they've added in this, uh, in your, uh, something Mr. Crow must not have looked at, it's called a residential animal. Ever seen one of these in the lobby? He couldn't read it, apparently. Or larger, on public or private property, permits are issued at no charge. The planning department, under the city's Woodland and Tree Preservation Ordinance, any tree eight inches in diameter or larger must undergo an inspection prior to removal. Inspections and permits are required for all trees, all trees, regardless of size, size within a woodland area, like my backyard, and the former backyard of my neighbor, a woodland area, where no, no investigation, you should see the site. Somebody drive by there and take a look at what they left behind, where they put an eight-foot-tall chain link fence, that I've already elaborated on the one animal that's been killed or suffered to death, hung up by this illegal fence, claimed to be legal by some guy we hired here to do what he was told. Mr. Crow is not, uh, as well-educated as he, as we may presume, and like I say, the baggage that came with him from the previous city planner, and promises and appraisals ordered by the City Attorney's Office on my property are yet to be explained. Mick Vanda pulled like a, he pulled a Cobus on me, Mr. Seiber. Remember when he promised you what a great idea it would be if Cobus in it, three-million-dollar tax break? How long were they in business? Longer than Mr. Lance told you that night? Two years? Were they in business longer than two years? And was the only job created by Cobus for Quaney Kilpatrick? That's the only employee? You're confused, I know. At your age, you have a well-deserved ability to be confused. But Quaney Kilpatrick was employed by Cobus after Mac, after Microsoft bought them out in fifteen months, Lance. You were wrong. Wasn't two years. They're out of business in fifteen months. The tax abatement trap that Sharet released indicates their tax abatement didn't expire for three years. They were gone out of that building. I drove by it every week, they had two employees there. And when Microsoft transferred the whole operation to Texas, Quaney got employed. So congratulation on creating jobs, Mr. Seiber, you and Maxitrol, you and Cobus, you and Lear, you're doing a wonderful job to undermine the economy of the country I love and the city I've paid dues in for twenty years to look at your disgusting smirk on your face. And I address issues that could pay them for some of the things we have to beg and raise millage for. You'd rather give it to CBS? I'm not listening, I'm speaking.
Mr. Bunker, Mr. Bunker.
Thank you for your time, I love the city. Or Ms. Lawrence?
The next request for recognition from the chairman of the office. Ms. Simon, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Um, I wanna pick up where I, it's cut off lifetime, but I have something I wanted to speak about in particular. I've been staying at a condominium for the first time in my life. Complex, it's a smaller-scale one, I understand, here in Southfield. They have a trio of board members, and this evening, they have President Geneva Soski, Vice President Andrea Whitfield, and Treasurer Secretary Wayne Fuller. And then there is a legal firm out of, um, St. Clair Shores named Wayne Wegner and Associates, and Jeffrey Volmer is on the front lines. Well, I, I filed a complaint against Jeffrey Volmer with the association that supposedly handles grievances against attorneys. But my experience elsewhere than here is that such organizations that claim they are disciplining or holding attorneys to a professional code do not do so in behalf of citizens who are wronged. They only do so when they wanna check someone that's getting out of line with the establishment's agenda. In another state, I had two attorneys threatened because they dared to assert the rights of their client. These are the, another bar association operative, um, jurisdiction or his territory, or, you know, or one at bar or a bench, either way. I'm going to leave, just I have, I have a couple of extra papers here, I'm just gonna leave in case anybody wanted to review these things. But I, I'm a visitor at this condominium, and I've been harassed and hindered for the entire time I've been here through verbose, um, uh, communications from an attorney, when it's, the communication need not go to an attorney at all. And then reportedly during this administration's, um, tenure, the association's reserves have been depleted to a larger extent than usual, and there was a financial audit done, and even though the members at large requested a copy of it, the members at large did not get it, only selected members got it. And this attorney apparently is using every opportunity to advance his bottom line, writing letters, uh, emails, phone calls, he's loving every minute of it, and he's banking on it. Even brought one of the co-owners, they call them, to, into litigation for something that should've been resolved internally amongst the co-members here, so-called co-owners, although no one owns anything in this nation today. But they've been running this thing, they have a thing going on, this particular group, they tell me, uh, some of the testimonies, they tell, tell me, it hasn't always been like this. But this particular group, this trio of board members, and this particular attorney out of Wayne Wegner's firm, have a thing going on, and I filed a complaint here and there, so far, nothing has been investigated. I'm told by that organization down in Detroit that this person has not violated any code of professional conduct. And apparently, this attorney knows that, that he's not gonna be held accountable. And this board, we get away with it for a while, I guess, because they're all proceeding very bravely, and instead of trying to create some harmony amongst co-owners, they're doing their damnedest to create friction and conflict. The rate, uh, the attorney also racked up like four thousand dollars in fees, taking a woman to court about a dog that was oversized for regulations. I thought he was trying to get my family into litigation, 'cause I was a visitor with my service dogs. They've been harassing me ever since, I've been there, as I said. They want me to prove I'm disabled because I don't look like it, they're telling me, and prove I need two service dogs, like with any of their business. I wasn't creating any disruption there, and I had a couple of letters to show the type of work that's being done. And I don't know if this is an aberration in Southfield, or if these types of scams are being perpetrated across the board with condominiums and homeowners' associations. I understand that many people are disillusioned with the workings of some of those, but as I was told, it depends on the season, who you have as board members. Uh, if you have decent people in there that are kind and honest, you don't have all the friction. But if you have a group in there that wants to run it like authoritarian regime and penalize people for every little infraction.
Mr. Mott, your time is up.
It is. Well, thank you, I was gonna try to pick up on my theme from the last time, I've read this particular one, but I thank you for not at least cut me off abruptly as you did last time. Any questions?
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mon. Since nineteen sixty-eight, I have lived at seventeen-eight-eighty Louis Street. Tonight, I'm here to talk about a great tragedy that has fallen upon this great city. Unfortunately, our library will be reducing its hours by thirty-three and a third percent, that is, by twenty-two hours per week, starting September the fourth. This wonderful Southfield treasure that cost us thirty-seven million dollars and attracts two thousand patrons daily will be closed each and every Friday henceforth. The doors will be locked, the lights will be turned off, the computers will lie idle, and Mark Twain will be sitting in the dark, alone with no one, but no one to share his wit with. How sad, how truly sad, how sad indeed. This evening, I'd like to offer an alternative to the reduction of the library's hours by thirty-three and a third percent, and thus restore the library's hours back to normal with a cost-saving program, a twelve-step program that I call Share Sacrifice. Step one, reduce council's salary by thirty-three and a third percent, that's you folks. Step two, reduce the mayor's salary by thirty-three and a third percent. Step three, reduce the city clerk's salary by thirty-three and a third percent. Step four, reduce the city treasurer's salary by thirty-three and a third percent. Step five, reduce the salary of all city employees who make over a hundred thousand dollars a year by thirty-three and a third percent. Step six, reduce the free trips by thirty-three and a third percent. If you folks want to network throughout this planet, use the internet instead of Northwest Airlines. It's a lot cheaper, it's a whole lot faster, and the top of the line, you folks won't get a suburb. Step seven, reduce council's consumption of free food by thirty-three. Step seven, reduce council's consumption of free food by thirty-three and a third percent. Why can't you folks front begging like Warren Buffett and Sam Walton? Step eight, reduce the number of tax abatements by thirty-three and a third percent. Why does council continue to this very day to subsidize Denzel's half-billion-dollar criminal fine to Uncle Sam via a tax-abatement scam at the expense of the Southfield Library? Let Denzel pay for his own traffic ticket. After all, Denzel ran the red light, not the library. Step nine, reduce the number of paid lobbyists in Lansing by thirty-three and a third percent. I thought we sent Ruby Hobbs and Vincent Gregory off to Lansing to lobby for Southfield, and it doesn't cost this city a penny. Step ten, reduce the free cars by thirty-three and a third percent. Step eleven, reduce the free gas by thirty-three and a third percent. Step twelve, reduce the free auto insurance by thirty-three and a third percent. When Oprah gave out free cars, she didn't give out free gas and free insurance. This city is trying to out Oprah Oprah. There's one big difference between Oprah and this city. Oprah has over two billion dollars in the bank, while this city is kissing bankruptcy. That's why last year, Southfield had to be bailed out by taxpayers in order to keep this city afloat. Was the bailout to help the library as marketed, or was the bailout really for free cars, free gas, free insurance, the lobbyists, those criminals at Denzel, free food, free trips, and to maintain the fat cats, fat salaries? Tonight, I would like to suggest to council that you right this ship with a rule ten. Otherwise, we, the voters, will do a rule ten on you. It's time for a change. Yes, it's time for a change. In a word, cut the fat and give the surplus to the library. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Ms. Mallon.
Toby Rhodes, 17001 New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 48075. I want to talk about my interaction with the Southfield Police, the Southfield City Attorney, and Forty-Sixth District Court with regards to Bank of America. Last time I talked to the Southfield at this kind of meeting, I walked out and was arrested by the Southfield Police. Now, I know they did it because I've been speaking out against them about their violence, their brutality, their crimes against the public. And they used that as an opportunity, I guess, to send a message to me that they won't tolerate any dissent. I see why very few others in the community want to speak out against them, because the Southfield Police are basically immune from prosecution. The city attorney will now prosecute any crimes against the Southfield Police, no matter what it is up to, including murder. That's the nature of the Southfield Police and the Southfield City Attorney's Office. I consider the Southfield Police, or just policing in general, an excuse to make violence against the public. They're not here for public safety. A lot of people believe that. They believe that and lie that the police are here to keep you safe. They're not. The police have absolutely no concern for the safety of the public. What they're concerned about mostly is maintaining the status quo, making sure that the rich stay rich and the poor stay poor. And they're lying in between to make sure you stay in your place, to make sure you're subjugated, to make sure you're controlled, to make sure you don't make trouble for those who are controlling and knowing what's going on in your community. There was a famous case in Washington D.C. to give you an idea of how much commitment the police have to your safety, where a woman was being raped, and her three roomies were upstairs, and they kept calling the police, and they kept saying, "They're on their way, they're on their way, they're on their way." And after a half hour, they didn't hear anything downstairs. So they went downstairs to see what was going on, and to their surprise, the attackers hadn't left, they were still there. So for the next fourteen hours, they were all raped, robbed, and beaten. Now fortunately, they survived the ordeal, and they filed a lawsuit against the local police for failure to protect. And the very famous decision, the Court of Appeals ruled that they threw out the case and said that the police in this country, the United States, have absolutely no duty, no obligation, no responsibility whatsoever to protect you, none. They could see a crime being committed against you, they could see you victimized and ruled life. It's not their responsibility to do anything, or at least you cannot hold them responsible for their failure to protect. Another federal court judgment, the police are not your personal bodyguard. In fact, the point has been made that, by some defense attorneys, that the number one person responsible for your personal safety is you. Don't let the phone be your first line of defense. If you're relying on, first, getting to the phone, second, someone answering, third, someone having time to actually speak to them, and then fourth, that the police actually come to defend, they actually do what you want, you're actually taking your personal safety very, very lightly. So the police aren't here to keep anyone safe. They're here to make sure you stay in line. They show that to me repeatedly over the past three years. I mean, this has been my personal experience with the Southfield Police. I have the legal and lawful rights to picket that is established by the Supreme Court and the Michigan Constitution and the Michigan Supreme Court, but they don't care, because Bank of America is the owner of Southfield. The Southfield Police have determined that. They're the ones who control this community, or the other corporations, so they deem worthy of protection. Those are the ones who control the community. The homeowners, the taxpayers, the voters, those who live here, you're here to stay in your place, to do as you're told. And if you try to say anything against them, they will attack you. They will accuse you, it doesn't matter if there's evidence, it doesn't matter if there's facts. Once accused, and you go into Forty-Sixth District Court, the city attorney will make sure that the judge sees you as guilty, and guilty. And if you get the wrong judge, you can forget it. Because in my case, I went before William J. Richards. I've been charged repeatedly by the Southfield Police and succeeded, because I always ask for a jury, people from the community. Because if you ask anybody who's paid by the system, the legal system of Southfield, you are guilty the second you are accused. And I was before William J. Richards and accused by the Southfield Police, and he called me a racial smirnoff in court. Now, I didn't take it too personally, because it was against all black men and the Forty-Sixth District Court, the Southfield Police, and the City Attorney's Office, making their business to attack black men, because they figured out, "We're not going to stand up, we're not going to exercise our rights, we're not going to appeal." But it's only because I exercised my rights that I was able to at least have some semblance of appeal. But I have been jailed repeatedly on the false accusations of the Southfield Police. In fact, when I see them coming, and my family members will stay away because they recognize all the crimes the Southfield Police have committed against me, all the violence, all the brutality, I mean, they broke my hand, they attempted to keep me off the picket line, they hit me in the crotch repeatedly.
Mr. Rhodes, I'm sorry, we just have five minutes to go.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I can't sit for this one. We generally like to wait till everyone has had their chance to make a comment, but when you take on our police department on television, I have to speak up. Okay? I've had an opportunity for over a year to work, many years actually, especially last year, to work very closely with the police department personnel. But let me tell you something, their quality is outstanding, their service is outstanding. When you call our dispatch, someone answers, and they answer quickly, and it's three to five-minute response time. And when the officers get there, they are properly trained, they are fully equipped, they're very professional. And with regard to the event of Mr. Rhodes' arrest, that was an outstanding warrant, and the police officer was doing the duty, their duty under that warrant. I'd like to point out also that we have one of the most outstanding records in the state of Michigan for our respect for the public through the police department, and that one of the measures there is complaints. And essentially, we get very, very few, and when they're investigated, frankly, most of them don't make a whole lot of sense, they're here because there are other issues involved. And our litigation against the city, the police department, has one of the best records in the state of Michigan or in the region. So when someone takes on our police department, I feel I have to speak up. Apologize for the interruption of the flow, but I can't stand that Mr. Rhodes has a good command of the English language. I commend him for that. Unfortunately, the use of his intellectual capacity doesn't appear to be in a positive direction. And I'll just say, if we take on our police department, you better know what you're talking about, because their excellence has been verified by sources that are credible, and they are outstanding in their respect to the public and the duties that they attend to. Thank you very much.
My name is Pamela Gerald. I am an independent voice for Southfield. Regardless of the obstacles thrown my way, the attempts to create a paper trail, the false accusations, and the reported suspicious circumstances, I am even more determined and will continue to be the independent voice for Southfield. If you're watching this meeting on K-15 or listening to my voice via YouTube or audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155, or my telephone number is 248-352-9188. I will never lose my joy or my passion to help you, the people, even while under attack as your independent voice, that is my commitment to you. Whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, one of your neighbors, someone you know, or someone else in the city. How are we as a city treating our police officers? Are we serious about public safety here in Southfield? This city should be engaging in fair contract talks. Instead, this city is trying to force our police department to take deep concessions. Have the people seen any concessions from council or the executive administration? What have you guys given up lately? Question, what does this, why does this council have such a slow response time when it comes to selecting a permanent police chief, one who is educated, qualified, can improve morale, and that's respected by his peers? Question, why does this council have such a slow response time when it comes to hiring the desperately needed thirty police officers, including the two cadets that are already trained? Our cadets should not be police and waiting after three years when we need more police officers on the street now. Mr. Sharet, respectfully, tell the people exactly, how many police officers are we down in the city of Southfield? We need more police officers to secure our borders, instead of trying to use the police to harass me in the front of Parks and Recreation while passing out literature urging people to vote in the primary. Question, has the police department benefited from the public safety village? Tell the people if that money can be used to hire the thirty police officers we must have in the community. Our people realize that a community is only as strong as its public safety. Counsel, do you know that? Question, why does this council have such a slow response time when it comes to giving our police officers an acceptable contract? Since 2008, there has been no contract, and that is unacceptable. If their service is outstanding, Mr. Sharet, give them a contract and stop dragging your feet. Remember, whenever you hear a siren, it is our police officers that are putting their lives on the line for you or someone you love. This alone is worth an acceptable contract. It's time for a change. The most important issue right now in Southfield is public safety. Counsel, it is the police that respond within three to five minutes, not you. Counsel, it is the police that risk their lives for us when they get the radio call, not you. Counsel, they deserve a pay increase, not you. If you continue at this rate, you are jeopardizing the people's public safety because you are crushing the morale within the police department. Our police officers should not have to fight the administration and the bad guys on the streets at the same time. Tell me and the people what's more important? Is it fracking resolutions, free cars, free gas, free trips, free food, or public safety? It's time for a change, Counsel. It's public safety time. Give our police officers a contract now.
Mr. Sharet, did you wish to respond at all?
No, thank you.
I wouldn't resent your wish to the time.
It's difficult, but...
It's not necessary. I'm giving an opportunity anyway.
I think at this point, I would defer, there are many comments that are made that are not factual. It would take quite a bit of time and detail to go through them, also, there are redundant comments that we have addressed many times in the past. And I think that would take into account characterization of all the comments that I have. There are many inaccuracies, and they're quite serious, as a matter of fact.
I just wanted to give you that opportunity because we've, you know, established that policy. All right, counsel?
I'd like to say something. I'd like to try and sum this up, and I want to use some of the words that our city administrator, I think there's quality words. He said one time, which I think is really true, and that is, "Everyone is attached to their own opinion, but there's only one set of facts." And we have not been hearing facts. Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel?
Yeah, I'd like to say something about the library. Mr. Mallon, I, in response to your comments, I would remind you that the library, its operations are funded by a dedicated village, and those are not for city operations. And that dedicated village is the decisions on how that money is spent is made by a library board, not this council. The library board, after staff review, decided to close the library on Friday because its expenditures are exceeding its revenue from its dedicated village. And the reason they chose Friday is because it is the day that the library has the fewest patrons. It has, just doesn't have the, it's staffed, but it has fewer people than any other time during the week. And so it was a budget restructuring move that was made, and to impact the customers of the library the least. So thank you for bringing that up, but I'm glad to clarify how that decision was made.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, I'd like to answer, Jerome Mullin. It costs me money to be a public official, okay? I get no payments for cause, nothing. I get a subscription to a magazine, and that's my only perks. I pay my own insurance. So I'm a good volunteer. The past thirty years, I have returned the alleged five thousand dollars because of travel. I returned it to the city the last six years. That's thirty thousand dollars back to the city. So you want thirty-three and a third for me, for my, what I don't get? I work 24/7. I get phone calls Saturday, Sunday, Friday, 12 o'clock at night, 6 o'clock. The desperate people, can I help them? So, and I imagine the rest of them too work very hard, and to the amount of merit pittance they get is nothing, practically nothing. It costs every one of them to be a public official. It costs every one of them to be a public official. So what are you talking about? You don't know. It's difficult to answer a lot of the questions. If Pam Gerald would only know the truth about the contracts and the place and the labor and everything, we're not hurting the place. It's all labor negotiations. It's all process. We're not doing it. And you know what labor is. It's hard to answer. It's hard to... You should know. You do research and everything there is. You should know the truth, but you don't know the truth. Well, I'd better stop wasting time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Next, we come to the counsel portion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Frazier.
We have two sets of expense reimbursements for Mr. Fercassi. I'd like to take one at a time. I move that we approve the expenses for Mr. Fercassi for attending the Sub-Captain General Assembly.
Motion by Mr. Frazier.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
Close motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fercassi. Please let the record show to Mr. Fercassi as he stands.
And I move that we approve the expenses of Mr. Fercassi for induction ceremonies at the Michigan Sports Hall of Fame. Support.
Motion by Mr. Frazier. Frazier's support by Mr. Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion. Yes, banking is... Look, Mr. Fercassi has his stand. Next, we come to the...
Something in the council. On a positive note, I'd like to mention that in the last two months, a number of local businesses have had open houses and have invited council and the mayor and clerk to attend. And I would mention Secure 24 in the First Center Office Complex on Northwestern Highway west of Losher. What an outstanding investment in what was vacant space in this... They renovated two floors of the First Center Office Complex. And this is an IT firm that does cloud computing. Honestly, how they do it and what they all... Really beyond me, but it's a tremendous... When I went to the facility, the investment, not only in upgrading office space, but in the equipment in this office is tremendous. Another one, Blue Water Technologies, had totally redone its headquarters on Northwestern Highway at Mount Vernon. Once again, this is a video technology firm, and it's just amazing. You go through there and see the beautiful space, but also the amount of technology. We were also invited to open Town Square, a building that was built roughly twelve years ago, one of our last high rises, and it's had a major rehab, new amenities for tenants, and has opened a new restaurant at the former Morton's space called Gastronomy. And Gastronomy now has a liquor license, or shortly will. Another major investment. And finally, 1-800-LAWFIRM, on the corner of Northwestern Highway and Losher. Here was a building long vacant in rather poor condition, has had a tremendous remake with, once again, a major investment, but creating great working space for its employees as well as its tenants. I'd like to accept these invitations because I'd like to see how our business is doing in our community. And here are just four that have made a significant investment in Southfield. So please share that with all everyone tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Fercassi?
Yes, I would like to just state that one of the expense reports that I have was a seeing one of Southfield's finest young men inducted into the Michigan Hall of Fame. The young man grew up in the northeast side of Southfield, went to Southfield High School. Actually, he was born in Haven Park, came here at a very young age. We have a ball field at Southfield High named after him. His name is Ted Simmons. He is still in baseball. He is assistant to the general manager of the team. And of course, he caught for the St. Louis Cardinals, Milwaukee Brewers. So it was just a very nice induction and event, and nineteen of his classmates showed up unannounced. And it was just really great because he probably had the biggest fan club there, that group. So again, another Southfield young man did very well. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. I think Councilman Siren, I'm on the same wavelength in terms of supporting or mentioning a few grand openings that have happened recently here in the city. And first one I'd like to mention is the Creams Hair Salon, which is located at 19011 Ten Mile, owned by Donna and Craig Kelser. And Greg Kelser is actually a former MSU basketball player, as well as a former Detroit Piston player, and currently works as a sportscaster with ESPN. And they opened up David the Harp Art Hair Salon, and it pleads, "Council and the public go by and visit because it's just second to none. It's absolutely fantastic." Yesterday, my husband and I had an opportunity to visit a new restaurant in Southfield, Billy Sims Barbecue, which is Ten Mile Telegraph, and they've done a fantastic job just renovating the closed Arby's restaurant. They did a beautiful landscape, beautiful building, and we're proud to have them in the city of Southfield. And then lastly, there's an event coming up I'd like to invite all of the viewing audience too, and it's a premier fashion show that will be held here in the city of Southfield and is sponsored by Michigan Fashion Week. That's going to take place on Saturday, September 15th, here at the Southfield Civic Center. It's going to be hosted by Bianca Golden, which is one of America's... She was a finalist in America's Top Model, so visit www.michiganfashionweek and let's support the great things that are happening here in the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Moss?
Yeah, there are a few things. I've got a few community events over the last two weeks, and I think the number one thing, as I was meeting with residents, that they were talking to me about, and I completely share in their frustration, is the amount of construction in the city of Southfield. I think there's a... We all understand the logic, you know, that the end product is going to be a lot better than what we're going through now or what we've had in the past. But obviously, you know, we have... Some of us are trying to find alternate routes to kind of bypass, especially that Losher Road construction, which is a lane widening construction. But it was actually out in the community off of Bell Road in the neighborhoods there. And I just wanted to let the residents just be vigilant. As you're seeking alternate routes, just be aware that there's still a reduced speed limit on roads like Bell Road. And there's actually a... Still a stop sign on Bell Road at Coventry Woods Road, and it's a kind of an awkward intersection, but that's becoming kind of more of a major road in the temporary construction that we're experiencing now. Still residential area, there are no sidewalks there, so people have to walk on the side of the road when they walk down that corridor. So just be vigilant as you're taking alternate routes in the city of Southfield, to be aware that they're in the middle of the neighborhood. You've got to abide by the speed limit there. And while we're on the subject of roads and all the construction, I just wanted to make the residents know about an event coming up this Thursday, which is being hosted by our state representative Rudy Hobbs, the Michigan Department of Transportation, the Oakland County Road Commission, and Students Reinventing Michigan. It's going to be a town hall meeting on transportation that's going to be held here at our Southfield Library. It's basically to answer questions, address concerns, and give up-to-date information on what the state is doing to improve the infrastructure. And in specific, some of the topics are the misconceptions about roads and road funding from the state, how Michigan is different from other states on transportation issues, and its transportation legislative package and what it means specifically to southeast Michigan. So again, there's going to be a question and answer portion too, so you can get a lot of answers. I think the city officials should come to it too, to kind of get a better understanding of what's going on with the state and how it's affecting our road funding. Again, that's Thursday, August 30th, at the Southfield Library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Anyone else? What's going on? A lot of good things going on in spite of the accounting. We've got some restrictions. That's great. There's nothing else? We'll move on to the mayor's portion. Is that a mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's always a balance when you are running a business or a community. There are the things that we do extremely well, there are things that give us hope. There's things that sometimes you dealt a hand, like the economy, and it's not something that you jump up and down and say it's the best performance ever, but you feel so much pride that we survived it. The city of Southfield was truly a survivor. The city of Southfield has so many examples of hope, and I'm going to go through a few of those. And we embrace continuously the opportunity to get it right. And as citizens, I welcome anytime you have concerns or issues. But also, and I'm glad there were positive things here, because we need to... These televised meetings have a balance of this amazing city that we, as elected officials, serve the people, which is fabulous people in this city, that we do have a great city and continue to do it. We can't stick our head in the sand and say we're perfect because we're not, but I can tell you, we can stand proud to say that we have an amazing sense of hope in this community. I just want to talk about a few of those. I'm just going to call it summer in Southfield, the Bird Concerts. I've just seen amazing tree concerts that are mostly our seniors, but I don't know if I'm getting older, but it seems like the age range has expanded because there's tremendous music there. And attending that, the opening concert, the closing, and Senior Day that just happened in the last week, where we actually gave tribute to our seniors and just let them know that the money that they pay and have paid over the years in this city, that we respect, honor them, and make sure that the tax dollars they know that they pay are also services and programs for them to borrow. Our pool, we had our closing day at our pool, and it's been refurbished, and we have the weather to support fabulous pool. So I'm... We had a good year for our city pool, and we were proud that we actually invested in it and started looking cleaner and more inviting. The Little League team, every year I get to throw out the pitch down to Fercassi and Meyer and Jones, some of the other council people, come out and Mr. Moss, where it's kind of like the kickoff of the summer. And I was there for the opening day of the Miracle League, and Councilman Moss and I were there for the closing of the Summer League at the Miracle League. And to see the young people, you have the disabled children, or the... I'm sorry, not disabled, the children with some physical challenges. And you also have our young people playing ball and learning the lessons of sports in this community. I also attended, this last weekend before last, the Southfield Open House, as they called it, where they invited parents to come out and meet the principals. At Southfield High, there was a line all the way to Ten Mile Road, of parents lining up with their kids to come to meet the new principal of the school, to get information. They were giving out free books. There was just this celebration that schools starting again at Southfield High, and it was just an amazing sight to see because our schools are totally tied to our image. And I use all of my political power to show that we are a partner, and I want them to be successful. Anything that I can do, and many of you have to, to make our schools better, to support them, they need it. But something I attended that I thought was just amazing this summer, and it was the Southfield High, all class reunion, and it was right around the line with the... It was packed. It was packed with all of these adults that have gone through Southfield High. They get together every year, and they play ball, and they cook, and they revisit it. And then some of them start their hairlines back to the seed, and you know, then you have some of them gather ones or something. That was just, to me, such a pain, all these just engaged, driven adults that went throughout Southfield School. It was just... I had first pride standing there saying, wow, this is Southfield. And I was amazed that the number of those children have now come back to live in Southfield. And that is quite remarkable, states, to the city where you can go to college, be educated, and still choose to come home and buy a home and guard your family and live in this community. So while we do have our challenges, we have a lot of problems. And the other thing that I had a great time in Southfield to attend is most of the council members, the Nathan Association's pick for annual dividend. Throughout the city, these communities are still fighting to engage the neighbors that have a sense of, we are a community within the city. And what they do, the leadership, these different associations, brand people gather, anything they can, you know, when new people move in, trying to engage them and keeping the tradition going and learn something. I think I trumped him by knowing all the history of the city. We were at a Nathan Association meeting, and I said one time we had an Indian renovation that was in the city of Southfield. And I... And the land, so the old type telegraph, and so... So I learned something, a story, and part of that made it an association. It may sound like, okay, the mayor's really good at happy doing that, but I really, really just want the community to know that all of our town, she's a wealthy community, some wealthy enough, some less, and they can look at Southfield and say, wow, that's a city that's... They find a way to get it right. And even with the disagreements, like, how so? I have my own disagreements and things, but we find a way to end the basic care of the city and the community. And to my father and to my Southfield friends, I did my best. And I'm proud of them. They are human beings. But at the end of the day, when I call that home, I have told them that a professional trained public servant shows them my door and they care of me. And I too look forward and have questioned the ones that try to our chief. And I want my chief appointed and in the seat to carry this city. And we have been updated the process to make sure we did the best and tried what we can. But we do need our chief in place. And it speaks to our police department that even during this process, I have not heard any complaints about them knocking the ball. They have been... been, uh... Last thing I'm gonna say is that there are two conventions that have, Democratic and Republican, and I know there was some comments about political issues, and as you all know, I'm a very, uh, engaged person, I'm, and it troubles me how the discussion leads vocally from an issue that affects our lives, and the reason why we're elected to represent. I really don't care what a person is born, I really don't care if they put the dog on top of the, the product. I wonder what they stand for, and there are people on both sides of the world, and, um, we have to be wage people, we have to vote, we continuously do not vote at a level that we should. Uh, I constantly talk to my, to African American community, because to me, that's the most glaring thing, folks, that African Americans do not engage in the right to vote after, uh, years of being denied in this America, neither one. But, um, as these two conventions come out, and we have two people standing, they are vice, they are president, I just ask that, uh, this community stand up and show this region what it means to exercise the right to vote, to be informed, to be engaged, and regardless of your party, that it's a valid protocol, it's a valid duty of standing up and exercising that right and being able to vote. So, I'm signing off. This is the man, ending this segment of our meeting. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lynn, uh, you, you for having the leadership motion, if you have anything?
No further comments, Chief. Thank you.
Um, any other question?
Sure. I move that the legal department, uh, as they have to the city in, in, uh...
I want to, I want to talk to the department, and turn, like, the progress, pretty trying to represent, and, and, uh...
Before the, before...
Employ, yeah, for Southfield, okay, to, to, to...
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Um, we need to vote, uh, all major?
Aye.
Uh, we need to...
When you start to make the motion, you're important, and the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, fourteen, and actually provide any kind of sewer and water service connection on the court.
Of course.
On the, 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 on